Hi, thank you very much for coming. On behalf of the Squanum Community Association, the First Church, thank you very much for coming. And we will make an attempt to stay on time tonight. Okay. Couple of basic housekeeping issues, there are restrooms over in the side. Please sign up or email if you would like to hear about future events, which I'll talk about a couple of them. And donations are very much appreciated, it's our only means of financial support. So, the Squanum Community Association is a small group of six Squanum residents. We're wearing these name tags, do the members all want to just wave? We have a couple up here, so if you have any questions, we'd be happy to, and I saw that hand, and I'll answer that. Okay. The, what we do is, we plan to offer quarterly events to foster communication and community spirit. Additionally planned this fall is on November 30th, we will have the six candidates for the councillor lodge position here, actually that will be in the Upsteas Church because it has a PA system, which we don't have down here. And Mike Morrissey is sponsoring a program on the opioid crisis, and that would be scheduled this fall, we will let you know when we're able to pull that date together. The Squanum Community Association is very grateful to the warm welcome and support for the members of the First Church, the trustees, and of course, the pastor. We wouldn't have a place to meet if it wasn't without their welcome. So Pastor Doug would like to say hello for...
Hi friends! So glad you're here! You know, this, this, what you all are doing tonight is part of the mission of this fellowship, to this community. We believe that we're planted here for a reason, and this is part of it. So we're thrilled, thank you all for availing yourselves of this space, have a wonderful time tonight, thank you for making the time to be part of this, so that we can make better decisions as citizens, that's really important. And God bless you all, take care.
As you all probably well are there, there's a primary election on September 12th, and then the final election will be on November 7th. Please note that tonight is not a debate, it is simply a matter, an opportunity for us to get to know the candidates better, and have them answer your brief questions on issues that are pertinent to you. We are here to listen to their responses, so please keep your questions brief. Each candidate will have three minutes to make opening remarks, then we'll open it to questions, and then each candidate will have two minutes to wrap up. A brief thank you to Jane Shay and Sally Wainwright, the yummy cookies are back there, we thank you very much. And I'd like to acknowledge Noel DeBonner, Nina Liang, and Dan Remondi, who are also here this evening. And Louise Kowalski will moderate the program, and here's Louise.
Thank you, warm welcome to everyone and our candidates. And I'd like to begin by just reminding you, as Karen did, really, we're not looking for statements by questions, so our goal is to get as many questions as we can, so that the candidates have time to let us know more about themselves. So, anyone like to start?
Sure.
Oh, we won't want to start, I'm sorry. Cut your film, I'm going to, I'm trying to move it along. We have to give them a chance to do their opening remarks.
Are we done?
Thank you. So we will start with our opponent, Mr. Harris, thank you.
Thank you so much, Louise, and thank you to the Squanum Community Association. Who would've thought, seventeen months ago, we were up here, it was a group of us, waiting to hear whether or not I was going to be the city councillor or not. And wound up, I am. And I went, the second I landed on the ground, I was a new face, and went running. I heard things when I ran against the late Brian McNamee that needed to be done, and I'm getting only focus on Squanum, I focused on North Quincy, and I also focused on Marina Bay. But I'm on, tonight, last night I had the opportunity to talk about Marina Bay, and tonight I want to talk about some of the things that we did here, in Squanum. First off, one of the things that, which is really important, was, when I got in, I could've, I could've said, "I'm mad that you made me go through what I had to go through", but I didn't. I worked with the mayor's office, I worked with everybody who's great, who works for the city of Quincy. And what happened was, we were able to move things around, and make things happen, for Squanum. One of the most important things that we have done, is Squanum's on the list for a new school, and it was eighth, and now it's the next school. When Sterling's shovels go into the ground, and are up and running, Quincy, Squanum, our little school, 1919 it was built, guess what, and it had some repairs, Band-Aids. This is a good thing for us. Other things that took place, folks that live in the mornings, I heard during my campaign that they had asked for years for a bus shelter, it was the first thing I asked for. Took about nine months to get, and with help from the city, Sean Glennon, who lives here in Squanum, I smile when I see somebody sitting on a bloomy day in there. Other things that took place, we fixed Nickerson Beach, I was asked last year at the end of the season, can we do anything about the beach, well we did, with the mayor's help. Thirty seconds. We have...
Don't you hate that thing?
It's actually a relief.
Not for me.
Another thing, another thing that's, before we had is, we have the LED lights, thanks to, we were first, we moved up to first, thanks to the good people at, my supporters of the 103, 103 IBW, and then we fixed a very dangerous situation down at the boat dock. We actually have a temporary boat dock there now, but, and it's a stop, but plans are for a permanent facility. And there'll be more stuff to come tonight that I have done, thank you.
Mr. Shaughnessy?
Thank you, Louise. Thank you Pastor, Squanum Community Association, my name is Ally Shaughnessy, I've lived in Quincy about thirty-five plus years. I know this is not supposed to be a debate tonight, so I won't get into some of the things with the LED lighting, and I'll, it took twelve years after the deregulation to come in and finally get it here. So, let's just talk a little bit about why I'm interested in trying to go into the city council. I believe that presently in Quincy, and I love Quincy, and I think it's a wonderful city to live in, and I'd like to see it continue to grow, and there's a lot of development in the city of Quincy today, but I think that the development in the city of Quincy today is going along so fast that it's not really coordinated that well. Where we have too many projects going on at the same time, there's transportation issues, traffic issues, and we need a voice up in City Hall, that's going to show some leadership, that's going to say the things that have to be said for the constituents, like, let's stop and take a look at what we're doing, where are we spending all our tax money? I think that Quincy Center, I think it's a good idea to improve Quincy Center, I think it's going to become very nice and a real attraction for the tourism, for the city of Quincy, which consequently, the trickle-down effect affects all of us, it helps our taxes, it brings more people into the city, which is a good thing. Do I think we should be spending seventeen million dollars on a new park in front of the City Hall? Maybe not seventeen million, I'd like to see it maybe half of that or so, I don't know. I'd just like to be able to say at the city council meeting, "Hey, can we talk about this a little bit, instead of just going along all the time? You need a voice up in City Hall, I want to be your voice, I want to be your leadership up there, I want to let them know in the administration that they just can't push it through." Someone has to say, "Hold on, can we think about this?" So, as the debate continues, I'm like, "Come on time." Not debate, but as the discussion continues, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
And Mr. Strickler?
I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, it's a good opportunity for the candidates to meet the residents of the ward. My name's Steven Strickler, and I'm running for Ward Six City Councillor. I lived here in Squanum from approximately 2001, I actually moved in the Saturday before September 11th. I live here with my wife and my daughter, who attends both Quincy High School, and my yellow lab sneakers, this is amazing.
Okay.
Last night Shawnee asked, Ally asked me how many dimensions sneakers.
I love sneakers.
I've been active in the community over the years, I've been involved in youth sports, Squanum T-ball, Squanum softball, Squanum Storm, I served for about ten years on the City of Quincy Conservation Commission, I was on the task force that rewrote the zoning code about two years ago, two, three years ago. And now I want to become an advocate for Ward Six, everybody in Ward Six, North Quincy, Marina Bay, and of course, Squanum. You know, these are exciting times in the city, we have a lot of developing going down downtown, North Quincy, Marina Bay, we've got a new school coming in Squanum, and I have extensive background in construction, both as an attorney and as an engineer, which I believe will help lead to the success of the city. And the main reason I came here tonight is to listen to your viewpoints, get to know your concerns better, so I'd like to hear from the residents, thank you.
Now we'd like to open it up to audience questions, and we do not need statements, just questions, and the candidates will have two minutes to answer, but you can direct your question to one, two, or all candidates, so just let them know. Anyone? Let's raise your hands. Who would like to begin?
Yes, Mr. Shaughnessy already spoke to it, but I am concerned of how rapidly growth is going on in the city, and parking, traffic control, and whatever else, I mean, we've had an awful lot of new apartment buildings in the city, and that's a concern of mine, of how we're going to manage that kind of activity, and definitely driving at five o'clock in the afternoon on some of our streets is pretty difficult.
Can everyone hear? Did everyone hear? So you're making sure the development and transportation, and how will we manage that in the city?
Yes.
Would you like each candidate, any of them?
I would like each, I know Mr. Shaughnessy mentioned it as he spoke, so the other two candidates as well.
All right, we'll start.
Well, sure, well, you know, with the development, there's a lot of benefits as well, and, you know, we have to weigh things when you're on the city council, you have to have an open mind, and, and you don't rush into judgments, it's, again, a lot of the development had votes that, that were unanimous, and, you know, some of them weren't so unanimous, and there was back and forth, but I'm just going to speak to North Quincy's project. North Quincy's project will start now, I heard a lot of negativity about it, but that project is going to start, and it's going to start with a parking lot, that's going to go from eight hundred and sixty-two parking spaces to over sixteen hundred parking spaces. And there's a timeline on it, for every parking space that isn't being, that is being taken up during the construction of the parking lot, the developer is actually going to have to pay money for those spots. So there's an initiative to get it in, get it done, get it built, and we will, then we'll have, while Wallaston is going, going under construction, those folks can then will have an extra eight hundred spots for those. That's just one point, as far as North Quincy's issue. That will also help the commuters who take the MBTA, the MBTA is broke, and, and they need the money. They need trains, they need infrastructure fixed, and without the money that's being brought from that development, that I can speak of, because that's in our ward, and that's what I wanted to concentrate, in Ward Six, plus that development changes the face of the people in North Quincy, it allows them, their property value, to improve as well. I wasn't going to, like I said earlier, all three, there's three parts of the ward, why should we deprive them of the opportunity of making their neighborhood better too? And when that project is done, that neighborhood is going to be a better place. Thank you.
What's your name?
Jane Nelson.
Jane, Jane, you're not alone in your thoughts, as I'm out knocking on the doors, trying to get votes, and introduce myself to the different people in the neighborhood for voting, they talk, traffic, this is almost the order that it's in. It's traffic, taxes, what's going to happen with our development? This community is going from being a one-bedroom style home community, or a single-family home, to being a multifamily type home, I mean, four thousand plus apartments in Quincy over the past three years, there's a lot of development going on. And the crazy thing about the development that's going on, besides the traffic, is that not one of those developers has been held accountable to. How about if we have something there for the residents of Quincy? When you build in Boston, the city of Boston, and they sit down the developer in the city of Boston, they look across the table at them, you know what they say to them, you have to provide fifty percent work opportunities to Boston residents, when you build your property? Now that's a very difficult thing to do, no one could probably make fifty percent, but it makes them aware that they have to do something to help the residents, so they can work. Here in Quincy, we have tradespeople, qualified tradespeople, that pay taxes in the city of Quincy, and they're driving past developments, looking at the cars in the parking lot as they do in the moment, New Hampshire, Rhode Island, and they're on their way to Somerville and Cambridge and Boston to work, instead of working in their own community. And the, and the traffic is going to become, you think it's bad now, this is nothing. The garage that Billy's talking about, it's going to happen, but it's going to happen when it takes up half of the parking lot that's there now. At the same time, the Wallaston station is being closed down. I've offered it, some, I've offered some answers to this. Open up the parking out of the Squanum Point Park, have a free shuttle out there for the MBTA to pick up the people, for free, to give them the incentive to park out there. Wallaston Station, offer free parking there, again, let them go out on shuttle down to North, free. I know we only have like ten seconds ago, I'm sorry, so, you're not alone in that, traffic is seriously, one of the biggest issues for sure, taxes and traffic. And I know this, when a developer comes over the bridge into Quincy, if I'm city councillor, he isn't going to say, "Oh, that's a great idea." He's going to come over the bridge and say, "Oh, Shaughnessy's here, we're going to have an issue here."
Development's good, but responsible development is better. Development improves the tax base, it provides new housing, it provides jobs, problem is it also provides congestion. And responsible development isn't having all this massive development with three out of our four T-stations operating at less than capacity, all it does is add more cars to the road. Anybody ever's gone over the Ponce Bridge in the morning, it's a nightmare, it's probably one of the last things you want to do. What we need is a comprehensive intermodal transportation plan for the city, tying in ferry service with a bus service to the North Quincy T-Station. So that, if there's not one solution, it takes a few solutions. Taking the traffic signals, using modern technology, making smart signals, so they are linked together, and they can adjust the timing on the signals depending on the traffic flow. The most important thing is, you know, everybody wants to stay in the city, they want a place to raise their families, when they get older, they want to stay here, they want their kids to live with them, and if we're not responsible in our growth, we could price everybody out of the city. Traffic, you know, there's not one solution, it's going to take a number of issues, I'm like, "Come on time." And yes, the developers, you know, they're going to contribute to the city, they're coming into the city and profiting from the city, they should also bear the burdens of the congestion that they create. So as your, as an advocate for Ward Six, I will, I have thirty seconds, yeah, I will be a strong advocate for responsible development, which includes helping with traffic in the city, thank you.
I'm going to show, I'm going to show people the pressure they're under, we have Gina doing the thirty seconds and the big stop hand, so they're just waiting.
The only thing that could make it worse is bright lights coming right down here to make us sweat.
Sorry, we don't want to get in as many questions as, okay, I saw you here.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
On the, on, in the city of Quincy, since you're so involved with the Squanum School, have they done a study about Marina Bay, and how this will affect the students and the students' population of our new school?
No, they haven't, I can't speak to that.
I mean, we just know the school that...
It's before the planning stage, right now, right now what we did was, we actually sent, the council approved, was all we did was, we sent an intent, the intent to build and get money from the state to, you know, match some of our money, that's the stage we're at. And again, like I said, it was at the bottom, and now it's...
I mean, how would this, how would this new development affect that new school of our population? Is that school going to be built behind the size, and our kids will be in smaller classrooms before they even get started?
Well, that's, you can't, well, if you walk through the Squanum School, it's pretty much in disarray, it really needs to be, we need a new school. We actually need a new school, and more than just the school itself, is, is, the traffic is pretty serious out there. In fact, anybody who knows, the drop-off is terrible, the new school will...
I understand the traffic part, but I understand, this is something that really needs to be looked at, at the population of the people that are going to be out here in this new development, and we can't be overburdening our small school as it is already.
Right, again, we don't have plans on, plans that are set to stone, but again, that obviously will be something that, you know, the powers that be will look at, and the, you know, the people will come to it, come to us, will see it. The need of what, again, we'll probably build to the need, that's what they're doing with the Sterling School, and again, you know, having, in our neighborhood, having a new school on the block only helps our property values, and as far as Marina Bay, they haven't had a lot of, that I know of, a lot of children that are coming to our schools right now, the, you know, again, that's, that's against something...
That's right, that's right, and your study should be done, to see if it can move in hands.
Well, again, we're a couple of years away, we're a couple of years away from that still, but it'll be something that, at least it's in, it's in a queue that is in my lifetime, that I would like to see happen.
I remember that we still have, like, when High Point was first going in, there was a lot of concern with High Point, and where are these children that are going to, they're going to live, and where are they going to go to school, because we shut down a lot of our schools.
Right, and right now though, they're only at, I was at, over in Marina Bay for the ribbon cutting, and they're only, and spoke with those folks, and they showed us around, they opened the boardwalk, they, they, they're only at a small capacity right now, so to determine anything like that, the question that you asked, is, really, there isn't an answer right now to have, because we have to wait till the people move in to see how many children are there, if that's, you know, again, it's, if I had a crystal ball, I could answer the question, but I don't. I mean, again, I don't have that.
I'm not looking for a crystal ball, I'm just looking at...
Right, I understand.
As a city, as a city councillor, it's something that's going to be, you know, looked at and thought of.
Absolutely, and I'm sure the school committee will also have a good say in that matter too, in the process.
Would you have any comments here?
I'd like to make a comment. So, in regards to the elementary school here in Squanum, and congratulations that we finally got the ball moving on that, on 1916, one of the oldest schools in the city, it probably should have happened twenty-five years ago. At the same time that the city of Quincy built the Quincy High School, beautiful school, Milton, little small Milton, built three schools, in the same time that we built Blunt. Because what happens in Quincy is, we have good ideas, and then all of a sudden, we get like a little logjam going on it, or there's not, the ball doesn't get carried over the line, the goal is lying there, it just doesn't get carried over. It doesn't some things, but other things it doesn't. As far as doing studies on the Squanum School goes, I can't address that, other than to tell you, we've had plenty of time to study it, that's for sure. Because we've had so many years, the school's been really inadequate for many, many years. And congratulations, I'm glad we're getting a school here finally, it's long, long overdue. And it goes again to other things in the city, which goes back to leadership, the flood, the flood insurance that everybody gets affected by, many people get affected by, years ago they talked about it with FEMA, there was a South Shore Coalition of different communities that got together to talk about that, city councillor Margaret LaForest knows the best about it, she's studied tremendously, and is an expert at it, I would say. And yet, the city of Quincy was slow to jump on it, not because of Margaret, she was beating the drum, there was nobody listening. Nobody listened in the administration, there wasn't the leadership there to say, you know, "Hold it, there's something wrong here." So now it's happening, everybody has to pay the viper, the door's closed, it all comes down to leadership. Thank you.
In Massachusetts, all school development is overseen by the Massachusetts School Building Authority, and they have certain criteria that needs to be met, and depending on how you adhere to that criteria, depends on the reimbursement levels. And without knowing, I don't have, I'm not, I don't know exactly the planning process, but I'm assumed during that process, if the oversight of the school building authority, that they look into future enrollments, current enrollment, and so the schools can be built with whatever they anticipate for the community, whether it's growing community, or shrinking community, or a community intended to be, even population. And still, it's hard to have a crystal ball to see how things work down the road. I know that's not a direct answer to your question, but that's kind of the process that goes into the engineering and planning and development of our schools in Massachusetts.
This side. Sure.
Mike, Rick and Flo, yes or no, questions? Do any of you have the courage to say, before they put a shovel in the ground in North Quincy, the city of Quincy will step in and make sure that the Quincy Center T-Garage, which has been a skeleton for what, seven, ten years?
Eight years, plus.
Eight years, through how many years? Before they put a shovel in the ground in North Quincy, the Quincy Center is fixed and usable, because we're going to probably lose Wallaston here. Do, yes or no, please?
Please, Guy.
Yes or no, any of you willing to say, you're doing everything possible to stop North Quincy development until they fix this sore Quincy?
Yeah, I have the courage to say that, right? And if I were in the city council many years ago, I probably would have been saying it then. The idea that they want to, right, you know, they tied in the demolition of the Quincy Center Garage, just happening now, eight years after it was closed, into the Wallaston Station. And I believe the reason they did that is because the Secretary of Transportation was so embarrassed by the fact that the T hadn't done anything about it in eight years, which is amazing to me, because if you or I owned that garage as a profit center, do you think we'd have it closed for eight years? I know this, if I owned it, it'd be open up again, because it makes money, and the T, who doesn't have any money, they should have opened it up, rebuilt it, opened it up eight years ago. I would insist that they not do anything until they open up that garage. Plus the Adam Station, you know they're going to work on the Adam Station Garage too, right? They're not only working on Wallaston, Quincy Center, and Adam Station, they're going to start North Quincy at the same time. They just want to all put it all into, you know, they've been thirty-seven years to do the APA compliance at Wallaston Station, they want to do it at the same time, they want to develop North Quincy Center. Now, North Quincy Station is going to be beautiful, I'm not against that, not at all. You enter the city, hopefully it'll beautify the area, it brings in some much-needed traffic revenue. It's nice, and it's designed to be one of those centers where, and Bill had mentioned it at last night's discussion, that they walk to the T, no more automobiles, well, there's always going to be automobiles, there's always going to be automobiles. So timing-wise, no. I would say, are you kidding me? What were you thinking when you said we could do all these at the same time? I would say no.
Yes, I have the courage to be an independent advocate for the ward, but the same account, you also have to be reasonable, get along with your fellow council members in the administration, so that you can move forward and develop and accomplish goals that's benefiting everyone involved. The, let's face it, the Quincy Center Garage is unconscionable for the T, to even let it get to the point where they had to do an emergency closing, the building obviously wasn't being inspected, it's just poor administration on the T. However, I wouldn't hold up to... However, I wouldn't hold up the development of our school over another agency in the Commonwealth to let the burden of impacting the students, the kids. Because let's face it, the school is outdated. We need to get that school built as soon as possible. And to hold another agency to prevent us from moving forward on another project, even though it's a lawful law, and you can champion both causes at the same time, I honestly see it as too lenient, projects there. Thank you.
Well, I have the courage to say yes. Because, again, we're going to create very quickly, in a time that we don't have parking, for the closure of the Wallaston Station. We're going to have an additional eight hundred parking spaces quickly built on that property. I know that, because this morning, after last night's debate, I researched it, and I spoke with the developer. That's what a ward councillor does. He doesn't just holler at the moon, throw everything out, and get everybody all worked up, and saying that things are not going to be good here, and it's going to stink. Guess what? We got to move forward, it's going to happen. We knew Wallaston Station was going to close two years ago, and nobody did anything about it. Okay? So, you know, to put it on the ward council, what would a ward councillor do? What are we going to, lie ourselves across the ground and say, "You know, you can't build MBTA"? That isn't going to happen. Are we going to lay a crane down across it and not let it happen? That won't happen. I say yes, I have the courage. I've had the courage, fighting for this job since last year, when I stood in front of you before. I'm here for the people, for each, there's more to it. There's more to it that has to be done. We just put in, the city council approved, a traffic, a brand-new traffic department. They will fix it. They will fix it, they will help. I've been writing letters to the governor. They are not giving us, the state is not giving us enough, thirty seconds, because they have not given us enough police officers during any of this construction that's going on, that they're causing. There should be three down in the circle, one at the No Name Road, like they built the bridge. We had better traffic then. And I'll let you know, I commute every day to move it. And I know, and I fought about traffic when I was here, not here, but fighting for this job when I ran against Brian McEnany. Thank you very much.
Sir.
Good evening. My name's Bob Young, and I lived in the city for over twenty years, raised three children, went to all the local schools. And then I lived in this ward over at Five Bay State Road, and I own that property to this day. There's a lot of issues that are being talked about that are very important. And there's one issue that hasn't been brought up, and I'd like to bring it up at this time. And that's communication with your constituents. And you just rose a very dear friend of mine, Brian McEnany. He was a wonderful man. A wonderful man. And one of the great things about Brian is that when you called him, and at least it was my experience, and I don't know about anybody else in this room.
He was there.
If you called him, he would get it done. Whether it was, whatever it was, he got back to me. And I'm going to say it right now, my experience with you has not been the same. I don't know how it is with the other folks here.
And here.
But you know, you know that that's true. So my question is, how would you, sir, and you, sir, handle my questions? And I'd call you if you are elected. And I think the other folks might like that question as well.
To all candidates?
No, because I have my answer from this gentleman. And he knows I came up to city hall recently for the last time. So I don't have anything else that I need from him. We settled it at the city hall, because he never got back to me.
Well, I didn't come here to criticize the candidates tonight, I think we had enough.
There's no criticism. I'm asking you how you would interact. If I made a phone call to you, would you get back to me? Do you think it's important? Do you think if this person called you, or that one, or this lady, how would you respond? There's no criticism, it's feedback, and he knows exactly what it is. It's not denigrating someone, it's feedback. It's a direct question.
I've had experience with Bill. I called him for...
But I ask the question to these people.
Excuse me, can you get my person to...
I have the floor, I ask the question. I'm sorry, I'm going to take your first one. Ball.
I'd like to answer your question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we came here to be a doctor tonight, so let's try and keep going.
Can I state my question?
No, I'm going to answer your question. I'd be more than happy to answer your question. And I promise to be responsive if I'm a ward councillor.
I appreciate that.
I try to keep up communication. In my law practice, I've always made an effort to communicate with my clients as timely as possible. And I promise to do that as a councillor also. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I'm an owner of a business. And I recognize that customer service is the whole business. As a city councillor, customer service is constituent service. So if I don't answer your calls, and I don't take care of what you want to get taken care of, and you have a legitimate right, and I'm not responsible, I mean, responding to you, then I'm not really doing my job. So that's not good service. I wasn't born and raised that way. I don't run my business that way. My family doesn't run their business that way. So if you call me and have something, and a concern, I'm going to help you, because you are my customer and my constituent. That's the way I look at it. So you call me, I'm going to respond as best I can, as best I can. I may not be able to answer everything, but certainly, one thing's for sure, and I used to tell this to my salesmen, if you're going to let a customer down, we can't deliver the equipment on time. We can't get the crane there, because it's across the train tracks, on time. I would tell my salesman, "Call the customer and let them know you're going to let them down." Don't let them be waiting for that machine. Call it and let them know. Communication is the key, and I will do that for you.
Thank you.
For all of you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you.
Since we've been letting every candidate answer, I'll let Mr. Harris answer.
Thank you. Well, there are certain situations that happen, there are certain problems that can't be fixed. And one thing I learned, I did make some mistakes. And mistakes are getting involved in neighborhood disputes. Well, I answered you back, and I've called you back, but the answer wasn't the answer you wanted to hear. So I'm sorry. And there are other people in this room, there's one other that has been trying to distract me. And guess what? I'm not going to get involved in neighbors that don't get along. Plain as simple as that. We have a lot more things that are more important. We haven't even talked about our seniors here. All we're talking about is traffic. What about taking care of our seniors, making sure that things are done, streets are paved, roads are repaired, things like that? So I did call you back, sir. That's, you know what? Guess what? There's one thing that I can say, is this is public record, and I certainly have the news.
I was at the city hall, you didn't call me back.
All right, and, next question. We have another question.
Thank you, ma'am.
Regarding affordable housing in the city? I heard about stopping development, and if that's a strategy, then what would be the strategy to guarantee that there's enough affordable housing for city residents and their children?
Well, that's real simple. There's a mandate, there's a state mandate that we, federal mandate, that we have to, the cities, under the gun to make sure it takes place. And they will, we will, and especially if I'm on the council, will assure that that takes place. And I mean, there's a ratio, I'm not sure where we're at, but I know that it's something that's been discussed. I know Reverend Bennett speaks to it from the First Church up in, across from the city hall. He's spoken to it, he speaks in front of it all the time. And the council that's there right now is responsive to it. And we know what we have to do, and there is a mandate, and this city is mandated by a certain date to get it done. And they'll get it done.
On the federal mandate side of it on the equation, it's true, it's probably not enough. You know, I don't know if it would ever really be enough, but that goes actually to the federal side of the equation, where you've got to get the congressman involved, the senators involved. But here in Quincy, where the growth is like exponentially, and it's just, our own children are not going to be able to afford to buy the houses that they grew up in. It's happening, not just in this community, it happens in a lot of Somerville, Cambridge, I mean, it's happening all over the place. And, you know, we got to have creative ideas to figure out, what are we going to do there? Are we going to try and bring in more commercial development to help offset the tax base for the residents? Which is a good idea, and we try and do that. But I mean, Quincy leads the South Shore in tourism and so forth, but according to the ledger, we lead them in tax increases too. The average homeowner in Quincy since 2011, their tax bill has gone up twelve hundred and twenty-eight dollars. I mean, it's, so where's the balance? It's very difficult to do that. And we do have to bring in development, but it has to be smart growth. We have to figure out and look at it first and say, "Do we really need this now?" Or if we do need it now, let's make sure that it's done correctly. Not at the same time that something else is being built over there. Or they're disrupting the traffic over here. Just a little thought process.
Well, I too support affordable housing. We all want a community that we can grow up in, have our parents stay in the community when we get older, when our kids grow up, come back and live together also. But we also need some properties actually. And the best way to get that is to commercial growth. If you cut the taxes, you have to make up that revenue somewhere else. The best way to do that is to increase our commercial tax base. Then we can afford tax breaks to senior citizens, young working families who are also struggling also. A lot of times, that gets lost in the equation. It's a lot of young families raising their kids who are struggling to buy on a day-to-day basis. And you want to make them welcome and stay in Quincy also. So there's not one solution, but there's little pieces of the puzzle to put together to come up with a comprehensive solution. Thank you.
Thank you. From the side.